All right, we'll now call the council meeting for April 26th to order, 6:00 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We just ask that your will be done tonight, Lord. We ask that you speak to each and every one of us, Father. Help us make good decisions, Lord, for the future of this city. Father, help us to bless this community, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leave me see. We can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mary Anderson?
Here.
First up, we have a discussion about the mall festival. It's calling for Shane Easton. I don't see him out there. Is he probably still on the way?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead to the consent agenda first and we'll come back to that. We have the resolution 2020-01 renewing the state of emergency. If action is needed there, we have the minutes from April 12th, 2021, council regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the minutes from April 12th, 2021, identified in C6, council number 6 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Are there any changes or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland, sorry, Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
If someone who knows the Eastons, whenever you see them arrive, if you can just signal the board and then we'll come back to that. Item number seven, we have the advertisement perceived of unsolicited proposal, City of Avon Park Detective Airport. We have Mr. Clary with us tonight. I assume he'll be doing most of the explaining. He will. Mr. Clary, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir. We have reviewed the providers.
No, she was looking for.
I was looking at him, so where are you? Why you're here?
He wanted to just see him first.
Sorry.
We appreciate you being here, Mr. Clary.
Thank you.
We have reviewed, there's an updated unsolicited proposal provided by the team. We reviewed that and determined that that does meet the requirements of our statutes for an unsolicited proposal submitted to the city. We've also reached out to the Federal Aviation Administration, also part of D O T, to determine, because they provided grant funds to the city for the airport, what could be requirements they would have associated with this process. They both have indicated that they would like to review the lease and also approve that prior to approval by the city. So with that process, and they'll also be, I'm sure, looking at some of the others reported in the period. See, that will be part of the process. And would anticipate doing that should the city decide after advertisement to proceed.
So, Mr. Clary, just to be clear, is that something that they would begin after the city, after the advertisement process or during?
It really depends on the city and your direction. If you want to go ahead and start working on the lease document, they would probably be willing to go ahead and look at that as soon as you felt ready to present it to them for review. So you could go ahead and start on that now, or you could wait until after the one day of the council period. But that's really up to the city.
It would seem from the previous meetings that you were, you know, interested in proceeding forward, at least with this group. So it's my recommendation to go ahead and get started on it and that we do it through Lowell and David at the department, get that started so that we don't have any more, you know, delay in time, because I know that time's a critical issue for them. And I think we need to take the first cut of this so we get it where we believe it's someplace, something that the FAA and the DOT can prove. So I would ask that you approve that, they do that work. Okay?
Has anyone, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask if anyone on the board is opposed to that action.
I'm not, just have a question in regards to what's been provided to us thus far. Has anyone reviewed that information, the original lease language that was provided to us? Have the attorneys or anyone looked at that?
Are you talking about?
And singled out no-go sections or good sections and stuff?
No. We've gotten revised information that's, you know, sufficient to get us to the point where we can advertise. And we haven't looked at the, I have, I don't know if I have that provided with the previous leases. I'm not sure it'll be helpful. So at this point, you know, they'll take what has been proposed and start on that basis, you know, with whatever we can do and then see what happens at that point. At least we can have a framework of a lease that, you know, when I choose, obviously, we're leaving it open, we're not selecting somebody. But, you know, we can start a lease at least that we think can be something you would accept and something that FAA, DOT would accept.
Can I add one thing to that?
Go ahead.
In reference to the amendment proposal, which the attorney and Lowell have defined that it meets the Florida statute. I made each copy here, obviously it's confidential when the meeting's over. I am too, so you can see it.
Okay. Mr. Clary, do you have your direction? I feel the council wants to move forward, having the FAA and DOT look at that lease proposal.
Yes, sir. And the other item we had was the advertisement draft. And we were interested if you had any comments or questions associated with that.
Okay. Does the council have any comments or questions?
I don't.
Nope, I just said let's start the 21-day period. And it was possible.
Yeah.
There you have it.
The only thing I, Lowell, I spoke in a meeting earlier with Lowell. I spoke to the paper afterwards. As soon as they can run it is Friday, the 30th.
We have to get it into another state magazine as well.
Or administrative term.
So.
Need a motion?
Yes, would, did you just cover both those things, the motions, start the lease and get, start the advertisement?
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further questions? Anyone in the audience on video? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, ma'am.
I just have one observation as well on the board. So I think, you know, what, all they're gonna have to go by is this point, you know, looking at what's being proposed, been proposed. And so, I mean, I think you talked before about sending this information or send maybe correspond directly with Lowell. Is that all right? I mean, with regard to some of those things might be like total, total no-go's or what? You think it's premature, just go ahead and do a draft and work on it then with, I referred to like terms.
There was a draft term she provided. We got an updated version in this amended amount. We'll obviously look at those as part of that and provide that in the draft. But, you know, there will be policy items that will need to come back to the council, obviously, for your consideration as part of that. So there are items in there that obviously DOT and FAA are also gonna look at. So we can get those started.
All right, thanks. Very good. Thank you, David.
Eastons, thank you.
The Eastons, yes.
Okay, we see that we have the Eastons with us, I'm told.
Yes.
So the discussion is for the mall festival. I believe there was more than just the mall festival. But if you guys will kindly come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record and we'll get started.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is Shane Easton and.
My name is Shane Easton, this is my wife, Sheri. We currently live at 7003 Seaport Avenue in Temple Terrace, Florida.
Okay.
Just a quick question before we get started. How many people here grew up in Avon Park, born and raised? Okay, so there's quite a few. Sheri and I both grew up in Avon Park. And one of our favorite memories of growing up here was the mall festival and the sense of community that it brought. For two days in the early summer, thousands of people came to our small town to enjoy the food, crafts, vendors, and entertainment. Over the years, the types of arts and craft was changed and a lot of craftsmen and vendors were felt left, felt left out. It became smaller and smaller, eventually going away. Our children and grandchildren don't have the opportunity to have the same memories that we have growing up in Avon Park, you know, saving your allowance for the mall festival. There's an event, I don't know if many of you know about it. There is an event that happens twice a year in Fort Beat in a pasture in the middle of nowhere. It's called the Flywheelers.
Yep.
Over a four-day weekend, they have 20,000 to 30,000 people show up. I don't know what the purpose of the flywheelers is, other, what it benefits, other than the flywheelers themselves. But I find it hard to believe that if they can get 20,000 to 30,000 people to show up in a pasture in the middle of nowhere, that we can't have a piece of that in our town as well. We feel that if, well, the mall festival was brought back, we could bring that sense of community back to, back to our town because over the years, there has been a divide in our town along cultural lines, racial lines. There's a divide. I see it, everyone sees it, especially with everything that's been going on in the mainstream media lately. We want to bring our community back together as one. The community I grew up in was not like this. We have, or we would be partnering with Gaylord Thomas and the Heartland Cultural Alliance, along with other, along with other sponsors to put this on. We're looking at having it the first week of April of 2022. It's a little late to start trying to plan anything now because it takes quite some time to get everything in line. What we're basically looking to do is, like it was before, we're looking to shut down the two inside lanes of Main Street from Donaldson Park to Museum Avenue. We're not gonna push it past the train tracks because that gets, that gets the railroad companies involved and it's just, it's too much liability to deal with the railroad tracks. We understand that it's a large undertaking. It really is. And we're willing to put in the legwork for that undertaking. We've already been in contact with the Chamber of Commerce and it thinks it's an amazing idea. The feedback that we've gotten, you know, if you see in the flyers that we handed out, the feedback through social media and, and through our petition is just amazing. I mean, people are wanting this. And what we're asking for is just the support of the city to put this on.
We need the permission, the blessing of the city. We're prepared, not only do we have to organize this event and it's gonna take a lot of hands and minds to do it. We're prepared for the organization of various fundraisers to raise funds for this. With the help of the Heartland Cultural Alliance, we're gonna be submitting for grants if allowed. And also, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people that work in the county and the city that have said, if I could help pull this off, let me know. I love working, you know, around town, doing things to help.
Yep.
So people are eager to be a part of something bigger than themselves. And now is, is good a time, it's the best time because everybody's been cooped up so long and there's been so much emotion and loss and grief that everybody is in their feels. And now is a time that everybody's gonna be more receptive to coming together. I would like to learn more about, you know, the Mexican community. I would like to learn more about their style of dancing and their music and their foods. And, I mean, we've got all kinds of demographics around here. They need to feel that they're, they're new to this town just because they didn't grow up here, that, you know, they're a part of it. We need new traditions.
So I don't think anybody's gonna fight you to have the event. I mean, everybody, everybody for several years that I've seen on this council has been very much for events. It's just a matter of getting a group of people that wants the undertaking and putting it on. Obviously with Main Street, you know, you will be closing down lanes, so there's a process for that. There is an event application process that you go through. It's pretty simple. It does end up getting approved by the council. But if you're willing to fill out paperwork and you're willing to provide the insurance and the associated fees with it, you're not gonna have any problem. You're doing a great thing by trying to get it next year and starting it now.
Right.
By all means, because even if you guys get all the paperwork done, you gotta get vendors there, you gotta get, you know.
Right, and most vendors are scheduled a year out.
Exactly. They gotta get everybody excited online and et cetera, et cetera.
We are actually moving back to Avon Park, which we didn't want to leave in the first place. I was gone to take care of my elderly mother, but we're coming, we've been gone for about a year and we're coming back.
Happy to have you back.
We were kinda waiting for rentals to become available. Anyway, so we trying to do that and this at the same time. We wanna make sure that there's, there's gonna be a lot of headaches. There's gonna be days that we wanna throw our hands up.
Sure.
We're gonna follow this through. We're going to meet our deadlines. We're going to do everything it takes. We will jump through every loop. And if we can't do it ourselves, then we will find the people that can.
Well, we're just gonna say that the festival is this size, gonna need a conference of agreement, as we've done in the past for large festivals. And so make sure you leave plenty of time and get that done.
Okay.
Have a question. Are you working on an organization or you gonna be on the Heartland Coalition, the Heartland Cultural Alliance?
We're, we're working on an organization, but we're, as it stands right now, we're going to be partnering with the Heartland Cultural Alliance. We didn't wanna call it the quote-unquote mall festival because we don't want anyone from any, you know, race, religion, creed, culture to feel left out.
Gotcha.
This is, this is not about, you know, people coming down and setting up on Main Street. This is about a community that's culturally mixed across the board, coming together as one community.
As the proud mother of the fastest crawling baby in 1999, because that was the, his, his first athletic event of his life. And he won it during the springtime on the mall event. So I would like to see that one come back.
Well, I do have, I don't know if y'all have a way to put this in, but I do have a PowerPoint that has a lot of what's in front of you, but also a kind of a better picture. It's short, sweet, to the point. I didn't know if you wanted to put this in or not. But one of the things that I did wanna mention, we don't wanna overwhelm,
Yeah.
is just the fact that there is gonna be future events. People are asking for the Halloween carnivals, the braids.
So, I mean, for the record, the council is in support of all events. The only pushback personally I've ever heard was whenever Main Street's closed down absolutely during the weekdays, it's a bit of a problem for some of the businesses. But like you're doing with the inside lane, the outside lane's open. Everybody can still get their deliveries like they need to. So I don't see any problems with it.
And that's the way, and that's the way it used to be, is they, they closed the inside lane.
Right.
And when I, when I first started going to the mall festival, honestly, it started here in front of the, in front of City Hall.
Yep.
And it went all the way up to Passerboard and Realty.
Yeah.
I mean, train tracks and everything was included and it would take you two days to see the whole thing.
Right. And over the years, I mean, people like yourself come forward and they're gung-ho about it and they have it for X amount of years. And then those people get tired of doing it or move on to different places. And unless new people come along to take it up and start doing it again, it, it goes away, you know. So this, the, the city themselves, we don't actually do events, you know. It's a private organizations that do events. You know, we just go down the roads for you and things like that.
Right.
You know, but by all means, we're happy to facilitate it. You'll just wanna go ahead and get whichever organization you're gonna use to go ahead and fill out the paperwork. That can be found at City Hall. Sure, Mark Schrader there, the city manager. And Danielle Phillips can get you sorted out and all your paperwork and everything, get you started. And there will be an agreement as the city attorney had stated. But they'll be able to fill you in on all those details and get it going. And then your PowerPoint that you have, whenever it actually comes back to the board for approval, that'd be the perfect time to show exactly what you're gonna do and all that kind of good stuff. And by that time, you'll probably have a lot more support with you and, you know, it'd be an even better showing so everybody'll be excited about it. So by all means, we thank you for doing it and hope to see you soon.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One quick thing, are you guys aware of the TERRIT Development Commission, TDC? I think Maria can help you with that because.
There's an application with that as well. And I would encourage you to get one of the applications and fill it out. That one counts the heads and beds.
Okay.
So if you could designate, for example, just a quick run-through, if you know so many vendors are coming and they're gonna spend the night, then you coordinate with the hotels and then what they do is they count those heads and then you get funding based on that. And the dollars can only be used outside of the county for advertising.
Wonderful, thank you.
That's, that's, yeah, probably didn't hear about.
So I will text you the phone number to call and Casey Wall is the lead person for that, for the county. She does, and she helps with marketing with it and everything. And we haven't had an event inside the city of Avon Park through the TDC. So I think this would be a good start.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming back, too.
I can also email this presentation so that you guys can, because it's, I printed everything except for pictures. Thank you.
Very good. All right, item number eight, we have a request for construction of a dock. Let's see, see if RPC is here to represent.
Good evening, Dana Reddell, Senior Planner with Central Ford Regional Planning Council, for the record. So as you're aware, item eight is the request for the construction of a dock. And that is as a result of section 2.05.02 of the City of Avon Park Land Development Regulations, which, as we were reviewing this dock permit, we discovered in, and it specifically says, no permit shall be issued for a boat slip and/or ramp dock or boathouse except by the city council. The proposed site plan is included in your packets and it illustrates the layout of the proposed dock. It has been reviewed by planning staff for compliance. And tonight, we're just here for the approval.
I certainly don't have any issues with it. Is there, anyone has any questions?
I don't, I do only have a question for the city attorney. How old is this section and is it normal for a council to have to approve these? Shouldn't it just go through planning and zoning and?
I will go in there after.
Yeah, I mean, was this like an old insert in the LPR?
I have never heard that the council likes approving docks.
I mean, they come very rarely, but can that be something that can just be done away with and just let city management handle it?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, you establish the standards if you wish and, you know, so it has to be, has to be under a certain size anyway, otherwise they have to get approval from the, our record engineers as well.
A thousand square feet?
Yep, thousand square feet, right. And so there's other regulations, I think, which you probably care about, what it looks like and how it's maintained, things like that. I'm sure such a board can give you some suggestions on how to get that out of your hands.
There's already some pretty robust building codes when it comes to docks anyway. Everyone in the county already has to adhere to, so I don't see an issue with the current existing county rules.
So direction from council would be to report a text amendment that would include the cap, the same rules and regulations that the county currently has and replace the regulations in the Avon Park Land Development Regulations.
Yes.
And it's not have the city council do it?
Yes, okay, gotcha.
They could build a mansion, but they still have to come to council for a dock. It doesn't seem like it. Makes a whole lot of sense, anyway. Do you have your direction there? Any further questions on the actual application?
No, I just need a motion if we would please.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Was it, that's Gray's second?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I see you are, the diagram that shows it 50 feet in length, is that safe and standard for that lake?
For the lake itself, I'm not entirely sure. They do have a cell certification permit from Department of Environmental Protection. DEP allows them to extend out to 200 feet. Or I believe they also have a 30% limit depending on the size of the lake. So during the time of permitting with DEP, if that were to be an issue, they would come and address that.
One of the other requirements is that it doesn't impede boating traffic.
Right, exactly.
So if it was in, you know, canal, let's say, you wouldn't be able to block that. But, I mean, in my opinion, 50 feet is not gonna, your, your, your grass line probably sticks out more than 50 feet in some places.
Really?
Yeah.
No wonder it caused so much water.
Torpedo grass, non-native.
That's, I have a lot of that.
Was there an application fee for this? No, no.
Yes, $22,000.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, we already have a motion and a second?
Yes.
If there's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Next up, we have number nine, held a hearing to be second reading for ordinance 07-2021. Now read that to the record.
Ordinance containing this official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, providing one parcel of land, parcel number A-22-33-28-010-0420-0040, totaling .9 acres located at to East Main Street from the city's zoning of C4 mixed-use commercial district to the city P U D A planned unit development, providing for severability and providing for effective take.
Okay.
Thank you. And we're pulling up the PowerPoint now. I think it'll be the other PowerPoint, David. But I can go ahead and get started. So this is the second reading. This has come before the city council before. And this was as a result of a city-initiated request to rezone the Brickell Building. I think there's an issue with my PowerPoint. It's okay, we can go on without it. I apologize.
Okay.
I think it's my fault. But yeah, so I was going to share the same information that we all heard during the first reading, which is the parcel is currently zoned C4 mixed-use commercial and the request is for a rezone to planned unit development. The planned unit development is to allow maximum of 10 dwelling units on the parcel. And there were a couple of amendments to the proposed conditions at the most recent planning and zoning meeting. And we also added a couple of conditions based on our first here, yeah, I'm sorry, our first reading with city council. So I wanted to point out condition number two under exhibit B in the ordinance. It says, "In the event any portion of the subject property is divided, a minimum of 0.62 acres must be retained on the portion of property occupied by the existing building structure in order to permit a maximum density of 10 dwelling units." The requirement is consistent with the downtown commercial future land use, which permits up to 16 dwelling units per acre. So that was a clarification from planning staff that if we still have to comply with the future land use, which is 16 dwelling units per acre. So if they do develop at a maximum of 10 dwelling units in the Brickell Building, then 0.62 acres must be set aside. And I specifically wanted to point that out because the parking lot is approximately 20,000 square feet, which is almost half an acre. So if they do develop to a maximum density of 10 dwelling units, then a portion of the parking lot might have to be sold off with the Brickell Building. As we discussed, there's the potential for selling off a portion of the parking lot or the whole parking lot. But if we do 10 dwelling units, a portion of the parking lot will need to be included with the Brickell Building. If that makes sense.
Is that like half of the parking?
Probably about a quarter.
It would be 27,000 total square feet. So that building itself is, how many square feet?
Approximately 14,000 square feet.
So you're looking at 13,000 square foot of the parking lot, would have to go with it.
That's if they develop that all with 10 units, right?
Right. And if they developed nine units and they wouldn't have to retain as much land, they might be able to get away without taking a portion of the parking lot if they only do nine units.
Exactly, why would it have to be sold though? I mean, are you saying it was a possibility that it would have to or that it absolutely has to?
So if you all choose to subdivide the park? So if you all choose to subdivide the parcel, then you need to make sure that there's enough land with the Brickell Building to meet retention, I'm sorry, density. So in order to meet 10 dwelling units, we need to keep 0.62 acres with the Brickell Building. In order to do that, it would encroach on the parking. We aren't necessarily saying that you would have to sell a portion of the parking that's up to council. But if you do, then the ramification of that might be that a portion of the parking lot will be retained with the Brickell Building.
Only if you subdivide.
Correct.
So we don't intend to subdivide.
No, and I was thinking, you know, let's just say someone goes in there with 10 dwelling units and then two years from now they want to combine three of those into one big one. Then they're going to have excess parking space and that takes away from our goal of having more for the businesses. So to me, I, like you say, keep it separate and the parking goes with whatever contract we have with whomever gets the building and that all the space with us.
And to be clear, by subdividing, I mean selling off a portion of the land. So you're just talking about potentially leasing the parking lot or something of that nature, right?
Okay.
Okay. And so I'm sorry, moving on to the next change. On number three, it says, "Any interior improvements made to support residential or non-residential uses shall be required to meet all occupancy and building code requirements." That's standard. But then on number four, "The planning and zoning board recommended that any future development shall allow for retail commercial uses on the first floor and multifamily residential on the second floor only." The only change here is that they specifically wanted commercial downstairs and residential upstairs. So we had, we did say that commercial would be allowed downstairs. We just didn't specifically say that they would be limited one upstairs and one downstairs.
So are we saying that they have to have residential upstairs?
If they develop upstairs, it can only be residential.
That's not something that we would want to put in there.
No, I mean, what if you're a home-based business?
Right.
So what now?
Whatever.
If you're a home-based business, I mean, you'd have to have an occupational license if you're having people coming and going. I've seen buildings in downtown Lake Wales where half of it is residential and the other half is, is commercial.
Yeah, so I don't think we want to limit it to only residential. It's just that they would only be able to have residential upstairs. So they could not have residential downstairs, but they could upstairs as well as business. And then also the term retail commercial uses. Retail to me would imply that you have customers that come visit you. What do we care if it's an internet-only business, has no customers that come see them, or an office complex? Or a call center or whatever. I don't think we want to limit it to only retail, just commercial. I agree.
And it could be a combination of both upstairs and downstairs for?
Sure, it's just that if they're gonna have residential, the residential could only be upstairs. Is that agreeable, council?
And the last change that planning staff added would be number five. "In accordance with parking requirements of section 3.03.02, table 3.5 of the city's land development code, parking spaces for residential units shall be provided within the onsite parking area of the approved PUD at a ratio of 1.7 spaces per each residential unit established." So that's just to say, because in previous meetings we had discussed potentially subdividing or selling off or we believe that we might be going that direction. So we just wanted to add an additional condition that parking would be provided for the residential units on the second floor.
I got a question.
Yes.
Just like the instance, if a company wanted to have a business in their home upstairs, they would not be allowed additional parking for their business. Is that correct?
I mean, they could work out a private transaction between the city or whoever owns the parking, but we aren't going to require that as a result of their home occupation.
And the remainder of that parking lot is public anyway, so they can use that.
Correct. So it looks like the two changes that I have are that on number four, strikeout retail to allow all commercial uses and to allow commercial uses on the first and second floor and multifamily residential on the second floor only.
Yes. Any other changes?
That's what I have.
All right, we'll go ahead and get a motion and then we'll have a public hearing.
I make a motion, we go ahead and prove item number D9, ordinance 07-2021.
So second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This will now be a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance number 07-2021 is now open. Anyone of the public wishing to speak on this can do so. Mr. Carros, you have to come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
This is just a question, inquiry with respect to the parking.
This is George Carros.
George Carros, 28, East Main Street.
Sir.
Chamber of Commerce. About two years ago, Mr. Brokeall donated the land directly in front of the Brickell, next adjacent to the post office. You guys leveled that property. It's not on the direct premises of Brickell, but that too could be considered partitioned off for, to meet the parking requirements. Is that a possibility?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to bring that up.
It's just currently not built out as a parking lot, so whether the city does or whether the new landowner does.
Okay.
Somebody has a.
It's city property though, right?
Correct, yeah. Thank you. Any other person from the public wishing to speak or ask any questions? Seeing none, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
So does this mean we can go ahead and start advertising this now that we have the specifics or do we, you know, so?
Jerry?
I don't see why not. She has specifics. Yeah, I don't see why not.
That's, yes. So I have one other thing. So let's just say you put in the advertising, you put these specifications in there that you get 1.7 parking spots, you get commercial use upstairs. Could there be a line on there that says other items are negotiable? Because someone might want to come in and say, "I need two parking spots to sell my high-end apartments, luxury apartments." You know, then we can come back and redo the parking if needed with an agreement with the city and not stick to the 1.7.
I would absolutely say that simply because it may be something we haven't thought about that even requires a zoning change. You know, that you say, "Wow, that's a good idea."
And then the other thing is we've never really fixed on a price. We've never decided that. I know that we have spoken about this on several occasions, but never really narrowed it down to go there.
What we had discussed before was just leaving it open for offers.
And rejecting all offers if you.
As is. As is.
So in regards to impact fees and stuff, I mean, we had discussed way back when that, you know, if you have a building and it gets torn down, that whoever comes in gets to take advantage of the fact that someone else already paid that. So do we have to have that in the RFP or RFQ, whatever way we go about this? Or to let them know what's available? That way they're not bombarding city staff with endless, you know, questions and?
I would simply just say that some impact fee credits available.
Okay, well then you're gonna draft that, right? I mean, I don't know. Right? Okay.
We should be able to know somewhat what was there before because of the size of the meter.
Yeah, yeah. But I do on a weekly basis get inquiries about this building. And they're just waiting for this to go through and so that, you know, when this gets done, so we can look at it and it gets advertised for 30 days. Right? Or 21 days? What is it?
30.
30.
30.
So, okay.
And if we don't get any good offers within 30 days, then we'll be looking for new options.
Right, okay.
Do we have a taxable value for that?
You have to get it if you don't pay taxes on it.
The property appraiser should have a quote-unquote taxable value and then there's, I believe there was also a.
A chat?
Yes.
You can get an appraisal done. You can, and there's two possibilities. You can get a commercial appraisal, which would just basically tell you what it's worth fucking standard. Or you could get an MAI appraisal, which would be able to appraise the value of the businesses and things like that going in. Either way, you can keep the appraisal from the public records so that somebody can't get them.
But we got one. But you're at half ago, two years ago, and it was already exposed.
Okay, that was a standard real estate appraisal?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a commercial appraisal, wasn't it?
I believe so. Richard.
Yeah, okay. Never mind.
Okay, so who's gonna draft the publication? Is this gonna be a staff member? Are we all gonna scribble on napkins and put it together? What are we gonna do?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get.
Yeah, Sebring just put one out and they just reviewed one. They have a couple templates. I'm sure that they can be.
The staff will put one together, Jerry will bless it, and we'll go from there. Okay. Very good. Moving on to item number 10, this will be the first reading for ordinance 02-2021.
Ordinance to City Council of Avon Park, Florida, providing for regulation of mobile food dispensing vehicles, lunch trucks and other outside billing sales of food and beverages at Article 4 to Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances. Title Food Trucks, provide for amending section 2.03.00 general regulations for commercial slash industrial zoning districts of the Unified Land Development Code by adding section 2.03.04, mobile food dispensing vehicles and lunch trucks, provide for amendment of section 2.04.01 zoning district summary tables, provide for amendment of section 2.04.02 establishment of zoning districts of the Unified Land Development Code, section 2.04.02.07. C2 general commercial, provide definitions and clarification for violations, clarifications. Provide for conflicts, provide for severability provisions, provide for scrims areas, provide for inclusion in the code, provide for levels construction and provide effective date.
Jerry? Once again, Central Florida Regional Planning, you are up.
Good evening, Dana Redell, still with you for the record, Senior Planner with Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So before us tonight, we have ordinance 02-21, which are city-initiated text amendments regarding food trucks and lunch trucks, no longer regarding transient merchants pursuant to our last meeting. So on March 9th, 2021, the planning and zoning were recommended approval with a significant number of changes. And at the following meeting, city council reviewed planning and zoning's recommendations. And we made the significant, I'm sorry, we made the following notable changes. So transient merchants shall not be included in the ordinance. This will be addressed at a separate future time. All definitions for competition have been removed. Distance requirements between food trucks was lessened to 200 feet. Hours of operation were changed to 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. Food trucks were added as permitted uses in the C3 and C4 districts. And we removed the restriction of only one food truck at a time on any property. And due to the significant number of changes, it was recommended that we bring the changes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And when we brought it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 13th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission declined to make any recommendation, which they also didn't decide to table it or have any further discussion. So to our understanding, we're here tonight and we don't perceive that as being an issue, but we defer to the county attorney for any question regarding that. And of course, if anyone would like to go more in detail onto the ordinance, we can. But all changes are as reflected pursuant to the last city council meeting.
Jerry, do you have any thing to add?
I've never heard of a planning and zoning commission just simply saying, "Well, we don't want to give any recommendations." But I think that the best way to deal with that would be to simply take it as a denial, that they're recommending denial of the ordinance and then proceed forward as you wish. This is your final decision.
Okay, having said that, this is first reading for ordinance 02-2021. It's already been read into the record, so is there a motion?
I move the city council to approve with changes of ordinance 02-21. Is that, the changes already in there, correct?
If you are satisfied with the ordinance as it reads today, then it's just an approval as presented.
I hope that the city council approve ordinance 02-21.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Questions or changes?
I'm from the public.
Anyone? Council, public?
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think that my, I understand, I spoke to several of the planning and zoning members and it was their displeasure reviewing it because it went from zero to 60, completely opposite of what they had looked at when they made their original recommendations. And I think it was just them not agreeing to it because they just didn't like any of it and knew that they couldn't change it because council had already made up its mind. I personally, I think, made my point last time that I think that's unfair competition to our existing businesses. And I don't like the hours, although I love the idea of lunch trucks. I just think that some areas don't need to have a competition right in front of them or right next to them when they already have, it's not a fair playing field. Anyway, and I'm not going to be able to vote yes on this because of that. It's just not, it doesn't give any consideration to our existing businesses.
Okay. Anything else?
I agree.
I attended the planning and zoning board meeting and to my opinion, I thought it was a little confused as to what they were, what was being asked of them. Because I think one of the council, one of the members had stated they agreed with the changes. And then when the vote time came, they just decided on it. So I really didn't think they were gonna understand what was being asked of them. That was my opinion.
I would simply say that it's really kind of an odd, odd search. You need to have something in place. So if you get something in place, you can always tweak it later. And at this point, we have nothing. You know, so the world is open. If you vote to deny the ordinance, then you really just vote to let people do whatever they want to do anyway. At least you have some restrictions here. And we should tighten it down and not, if you wish to tighten it down. But just bear in mind, if you vote against it, that you should know that we got nothing.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. I don't really think they really understood that something has to be there. That, I shouldn't say has to be there, there should be something there in place. And one of, like I said, one of the members stated that they agreed to it, but when time came to make the motion, everybody just clammed up. I'm like, oh my goodness. And I think they was a little upset, no, I can't say upset. They was a little disturbed because they, the quote was something about, "The council just didn't do any, take any suggestions that we made" or something like that. And I said, "We did." You know, we did take some of your suggestions, but that's just the way it was, so.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second for the first reading. If there's no more questions or comments, we will.
I just have one comment real quick to get us with you. I just think that a lot of these permitted items in here are excessive as well as the timeframe, so I think that this is leaving it open to where we'd have food trucks too many places and too much time. I don't, I think we're excessive.
But if we do nothing now, if we do nothing now, we're gonna be in that shape anyway.
It's currently wide open.
Exactly.
Today. So this is actually more restrictive than what we have in place today.
And I think we should could tweak it as time passes if needed. That's, that's my opinion.
You can throw it all out next month if that's what it calls for. So we can make changes as needed. All right, so we have the first reading. It's already been proposed and seconded. So we'll now call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, 32.
Thank you. Item number 11, we have ECT supplemental work order number 180060-300-1200. Danielle?
All right, this is referring to the full air location contamination cleanup. This is the work that we're going to be moving forward on in-house. And ECT is going to be writing the consulting services, the overview of the project. This particular work order is to pay for the services and the sampling of the soil shall be removed. And that is in the sum of nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so on this, Mr. Schrager, is this not something that we can do? I'm assuming you've talked to our engineers and helped it works and it's not something that we can do?
Actually, Rick's here, he's the one's been working with the consultant.
Yes, we're gonna be doing the work. We need to rent some equipment to do it. These work orders are slightly out of sequence. First one that we're gonna do is number twelve. Then we just around with sampling. If approved tonight, that'll be done this week. We'll get the samples back in about a week to a week and a half. And if the sample was good and showed that total arsenic is below the threshold of commercial levels, then starting seventeen, we'll do the actual work of excavating soils and bringing it to the landfill.
Which would be number eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
And then number twelve, again, if the groundless samples are below the threshold, then the wells will be abandoned.
So the nine thousand dollars for that, I believe the vast majority of that was for labor, so you're telling us that seventy-seven hundred of that is for labor, so that's.
Yeah, nine thousand dollars is for our consultant. She has to be there. She has to collect samples along the sides of the excavation, bring it to the lab. We're using the soil, the sorbet stockpile on the back of the F work to fill it in. She has to take samples of that. And we anticipate it's gonna be done in three days.
I'd say, so there would be additional fees for the actual cost of the city employees to go out there and excavate this up?
Just downtime, we're looking at, looking at public group supervisor and the.
And machine rentals and disposal?
Yeah, and I gave a preliminary assessment tomorrow on what all the equipment rental would be.
Do you have a ballpark of what that?
It's about thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, I think it was less than that because I think that included these fees though.
That includes these fees here.
That's about another twenty, maybe twenty-one, twenty-two on top of this nine?
We have to, we have to go ahead and rent three large dumpsters with the soil and we have to rent, we have to rent the truck to get the soil from the back of the airport to the front of the airport. It's gonna be about a hundred thirty tons. And then we have to go ahead and pay for the trucks to come by to pick up the contaminated soil, bring it to the landfill and that.
So let me ask you a question. So the seven thousand dollars for labor, this is going to this consultant here?
That's correct.
Oh, nine thousand?
Nine thousand total.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So all of these together would add up to the old quotes that they had submitted to us a few meetings ago. And if I remember at that time, their quote was, was it somewhere in the ninety thousand dollar range?
I believe it was seventy-five to a hundred fifty thousand.
Seventy-five to a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
So where would this level come in, in that seventy-five to a hundred and fifty?
It's gonna come into thirty thousand dollars.
No, 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 I mean, is this equivalent to the seventy-five or more like the hundred and fifty that they quoted us?
Be equivalent to the seventy-five.
To the seventy-five. So all total, we've got roughly thirty for the first one. And we've got.
No, that's the total, all the work orders and the rentals and.
All of it's thirty. Okay, so basically we're saving roughly forty-five thousand dollars.
At least.
By doing it ourselves.
At least.
I see that as a win. It's a bad situation, but at least it's less of a bad situation, right? Council, how many?
All at the same time?
I, Jerry, do you see a reason why we couldn't approve eleven, twelve and thirteen all at the same time?
No.
Okay, is there any questions from council? Certifications, okay. Is there a motion to approve items number eleven, twelve and thirteen as presented?
So who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions.
One question, so it is my understanding that all three is going to cost thirty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
We're very close to it. All right, seeing no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zellweger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Question, passing.
Item number fourteen, second quarter budget report. Danielle?
Just informational, this is your second quarter budget update.
Okay, does anyone have questions on that? Seeing none, item number fifteen, city manager report.
Okay, the first one, we received our notice of intent to award our infrastructure for drinking water for six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Awesome.
Yep.
Excited about that one? The second one I have is the one that I, I got with the mayor on, Jerry told me something before, but it's just, we put, I think I brought it up before, we put in with this Enterprise Florida, twenty-five thousand dollars to use towards taking down the brick building, actually Sebring got it.
Wild building.
I'm sorry, wait, wait, we're not taking down, but taken out tomorrow. But yes, the wild building and the agreement here, but Jerry wants to look at it a little closer and, but he believes it can be approved pending his legal review of it because I've got Florida, or Enterprise Florida, want it signed as soon as possible. I talked to the mayor earlier, they want him to even do it electronically, so Jerry, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, I just have a couple of issues I need to look at that are in there. And I missed, I missed what was sent to me before and just got it, so I don't want to have it just go through without having a quick look at it.
As soon as you know, if you want, just give me a call.
Okay, Rick?
Yeah, you've probably seen email from her tomorrow sent to, because I gave your email.
Okay.
Here from Jerry, you can sign it because they've been on me, first they had my name on it, I said, no, I can't sign it, so the mayor's here.
Got it.
But I give kudos to Andy Mogul, who's actually working on the city hall, helping us out right now. He put this together and Megan Dalton County was just outstanding helping him out and he learned a lot from him, so hopefully there'll be more to come. The exterior wall of, I got one seventeen, but I think it's one fifteen Main Street where we demoed the wild building. And some of you have got with me, myself and Rick W. and David got with the owner a couple of weeks ago now, talked to him about it. And he was really good about it. We, you probably saw it, actually, I think it's Mike Stone out there today doing some patchwork on it, cleaning it up. And we're gonna paint it similar color to what's in the front. He was talking to about a facade grant and maybe something he'll do in the future, but for now, he's happy with what we're doing and making it look good for him and for the city, so. Um, I got a couple of text messages today in reference to our septicage. And they've been beating up Aveon Park for a couple of months now, I guess on it, but right now we're down. And I'll let Rick talk about it, but we're not accepting any. And Rick, you on handle it?
Basically have to plan this down. We have two clarifiers that takes the the wastewater from the oxidation dishes and settles out the sludge. One of those are down. It's a gear reduction device and huge bearing. That seems to be the problem. Right now we're pumping it out and to see if there's anything else wrong with it. When we do that, we just don't have enough capacity in the screw presses to cut to, to press enough sludge to take setting trucks. We just can't do it. We not only have, have to plant down, so one of the clarifiers has to be pumped out more than normal, but the bound clarifier has to be pumped out. That means there's no available capacity for us to take anymore trucks. Now, Lakeside Equipment gave us a quota of sixteen weeks for the park and that's just for the gearbox, that's not for the bearing. So we've got, we've contacted a couple of other contractors on emergency basis. We have one come out of Saturday, take a look at it. And he's fairly certain that if we got another kind of gear reduction box, you can make it work in that clarifier. We've also got, I contacted Mike Crowley down at Sun Lake utility district and he gave us the name of another company who's local, who's gonna come out tomorrow and take a look at it. And Rick Reed has gone ahead and contacted a third one. So we think between all of this, we may be able to get the parts we need, plus the City of Lake Wales use the same plant. They got the same plant as we do. They have problems with their gear reduction box, so they took it out, placed it on the side, made something of their own and we may be able to use that particular gearbox with some minor modifications. So at least get us through, you know, this current crisis. Like I said, Rick is going up to Lake Wales tomorrow to take a look at and speak with the mechanics there, so we're working as hard as we can to get this fixed quickly as we can.
Will it be at a hundred percent once it's all fixed to where you'll be able to continue taking septicage?
I can't guarantee that because one of the screw presses is down, we only have two screw presses. And when one of them goes down, we can only press enough sludge to go ahead and take care of the plant. We may be able to take a few trucks, we don't know. The plan here is to partner with the county potentially on one of, one of the grants that they'll be getting and possibly one of the grants that we'll be getting to work out some sort of an arrangement where they can help us expand back into that plant and we could take more sludge. But we have to wait on the analysis of the pressed liquid that comes out, goes back to the front of the plant to see if the plant, when it's operating normally, could actually use that amount of additional pipe strength waste work. That's what we're saying.
So right now you've notified all the sludge haulers that we're not taking their stuff?
No, no, I'm not contacting any of the sludge haulers. They know I'm coming there, they see that.
But I mean, if they're coming here, they're driving quite a way to get here. That's a huge expense on them as well. I mean, we don't call anybody and let them know, hey, we're gonna be shut for sixteen weeks?
We have so much else going on right now that no, we don't have the time to call them. They can't take an hour plant, they're gonna go off the whole county. So it's on the way.
What day did we go down?
It was last week, I believe, it was Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, so most of them know, but I take your point. Okay. Anything else? Yeah, the, Rick's put together, it's a draft, it's for the mall maintenance and the scope of work. And I know a couple of you back when I first started here a year ago were very interested in seeing that port went out, so be all right, just email to you if you've got something you can. What's your?
I have issues with my email, I can't even log in, so I sent you my.
Yeah.
Send it there.
We figured, we need to get that fixed.
Just email us all the council members if you can, and then of course you'll have it available for physical pickup from the city hall, right?
Yep, yep.
I'd like to go back to the Enterprise Florida.
Okay.
If we're in the consensus of we're going to approve this and you're going to sign without it coming back before council, we can have a motion now.
We need to, yeah, we need to approve it, a motion to approve.
Is it pending your review?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll all make a motion to approve the Enterprise Florida grant pending Jerry here's review.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I was a second.
I think whatever.
It's a tie.
It don't matter, didn't it?
All right, we have a motion and a mystery second? Seeing no opposition, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zellweger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Anything else?
I got one more. Councilmember Gray wanted to bring up possibly waiving some late fees on a water bill.
I asked Ms. Rachel Hicks, let me give you an update on what's going on with this first of all. There's property at two thirteen East Ben Hicks Street has a water bill of over twelve thousand dollars. The family would never be able to pay all of that. And what's happening with that is nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents is late fees and that type of things. What happened is the property owner passed away two thousand and four, I think it was, and then the daughter moved into the house. And when Hurricane Irma came, the roof got damaged. Then the bill never was changed from the original property owner to the current owner now. So now the grandson is the property owner. The property owner now is trying to get the house livable. So I've already spoken with the ship program to try to get some funds to help fix the house up so we can bring this house back on livable in the community. The request is that since the bill is almost, is eleven thousand, nine hundred, forty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents of that is late fees and late fees, that's what they put it down as.
Throw up the two thousand as actual water fees?
At two thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents is actually, it's not water, what it is is garbage, garbage bill. That's, that's the culmination of it. So the request is to waiver the nine thousand, six hundred, thirteen dollars. But ask, there's two, there's two things. First of all, to waiver the late fees, have the property put into, ask the property owner to put it into a current owner's name and not a deceased member who is in now. And put, have them to put them on a paid plan for the two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, twenty-one cents for twelve months. And because every month, it's still gonna be that fifteen dollar garbage fee. So they will pay that, the waiver, I mean, the extended amount plus the fifteen dollars each month. And then that way we will be working of getting this property back on livable for.
Is this what, no one knows in it right now?
No.
Brenda, was, did that amount include water fees?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any means on the property?
No.
Yeah, because the, the, since two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we don't charge late fees on the, on the garbage itself.
Yeah.
So the late fees that are occurring are from the actual water portion. And we typically in the past have waived those late fees on the water.
So I'm assuming it's probably a fairly small home?
It is.
So if it's minimum charges for garbage and everything, you're, you're less than a hundred dollars a month typically, right?
For what?
For water and garbage together?
It's about fifty-six dollars.
Yeah, it's about sixty bucks for.
So I guess my question is, how in the world did it go unpaid for two years without us cutting that service off?
It, no, it hasn't, it's been garbage fees.
It is just garbage fees. And this started because after Brenda called me, I went down and got what she was given by Marnita. It looks like it started back in November of seventeen.
Yeah.
Is when it really started climbing and then obviously it goes by percentages, but no, it was garbage, the water was shut up.
So wasn't an ordinance or a resolution passed in regards to admin fees or, you know, current costs? Yes, which is the two thousand she's referring to or the eleven thousand nine hundred or something?
You're referring to the late fees. We don't charge it on the actual garbage fee.
Okay.
And they don't want to charge the late fee on the water, so the amount of water that was charged every month, it'll charge that percentage on just the water sewer that we're out.
The late fees in the sewer every month, it was.
Yeah, but in the past, we waived all the white, the late fees before.
Those are.
City attorney, you have a comment?
I propose the same, the same comment that I've made before. I mean, you need some standards for this, looks like you do for forgiving code enforcement leads, but I, I'm not gonna step into this because it's, I don't know, that, that large, I don't see how somebody would possibly.
I don't see an issue with taking late fees off, it's not hard costs.
So I mean, are their taxes paid up and all, they're not gonna lose the house many times, you know, they're not looking to sell it and get this.
No.
Yeah, so now they've got, you know.
No, that was the first thing that I, that I ventured out to, to make, to ensure that. I even went to the county and talked with the ship program that they will have some funds available within the next ninety days.
And that has to be homeowner occupied?
Yes.
The only additional thing I would have to say is that, you know, you should probably have a brief agreement, probably do it staff, but just something where those situations where, you know, no good, term goes unpunished, you know, somebody gets this forgiven, then they decide that they're gonna sell the house or they decide that they're not gonna pay the new water bills and so on.
They got something in order.
Yeah, typically with this, we do the payment arrangement and the leads, if any leads were recorded, we don't release them until it's paid.
Ms. Gray, there is someone, I know you, no one's in the house, but there is someone that you, that has agreed to make the monthly payments?
Yes, Ms. Rachel, Ms. Rachel, she's the aunt of the young man, it's her nephew.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I don't know what to say, but I agree with what Brenda's saying. I'm good with this.
Okay, the motion should be, was, was to waiver the, the. Okay. The, the, the motion should be, was, was to waiver the, the, the
Late fees.
Late fees and on the property and also allow the homeowner to pay twenty three, twenty eight, twenty one over twelve months plus the monthly garbage fee. And the third thing, the property be placed into a current family member.
Well, the last part is all they need to do is go down and apply to the city to change the.
Yeah, they've done that. They, it's, it's been changed, but it has not been changed on our side.
So they, they just have to come down to city hall and sign the contract?
Gotcha.
And, and that's everywhere that has to happen.
Okay.
So you just need a motion to waive the fees and enter into a payment arrangement for twelve months?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
In, in addition to the fifteen dollars a month?
Yes.
Now make the motion to waive with those late fees on the property. With, with what the mayor just said. Because that's a lot. That's, that's more than a mouthful. Anyway, and with the arrangement that they will pay this monthly fee.
So it's basically so moved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further questions?
I'd just like to make a statement. I've been working with this client way back when the CDPG grant came out. And they had applied for it, but now I realize this is probably why they didn't, wasn't on the list, because you can't owe money to the city. So, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing in.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. I have one other thing. Not concerning this, an update on Lake Tulane cleanup.
The update on Lake Tulane cleanup, it is on David Roberts' list. You know, to get to it, whether it's three, four, or five, I don't know, but they're extremely busy. They're three people down and they're the five person crew down from the inmates, so. But I talked to him after I talked to you.
Okay.
He said, yes, Mark, we're gonna get to it. Can I tell you the exact day? Just the same as he told me about the building up there. I can't tell you the exact day, so.
So, so who's David Roberts now?
He's a public work supervisor.
Oh, our public worker.
Been doing a heck of a job. And, and again, I give them all kudos for being over there. Well, Galen's left and, and about the park and the bathrooms over there. And I went over there and met with Rick Reed and David Roberts and they just took off from there. And I thought the park looked extremely nice for the Blueberry Festival.
They were painting. Yeah, they were there, I think, just two or three days before the event.
They said you were out running, stopped there and saw them and, I don't know, they did really good work and they're guys, they, they worked very hard over there. So they'll do the same down Lake Tulane, so.
I just appreciate that very much.
Anything else for the good of the city?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. And I don't know how often it's being made, but for the administration that falls under administration, Mark Schradl, Dave, Greg, Danielle, thank you for what you do. You guys really do do a good job and I see it and I do appreciate it. I'm sure all of us see it, but very much, very well appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And all of you that reached out to Kim, that meant a lot to her.
Yes.
Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, intent motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.